Monthly crime stats of the Baltimore City Police Department. I'm the chairman of this committee and I'd like to introduce my colleagues who are with us. To my right is Councilman Pinkett, to my left is Councilwoman McRae and Councilman Cohn. I will now turn the floor over to the police commissioner to introduce his team and jump into the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman. The city council residents watching at home, first introducing me, I'm standing right here in the middle of the deputy commissioners.
Hold on, is this mic on? It makes not, mic's not working.
Not on? How's it now? How's it now?
That's good.
Alright.
It's not on.
Testing, testing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and other members of the council and residents watching at home. First introducing the members of my team. My deputy commissioners are here, Deputy Commissioner Nato, Deputy Commissioner Murphy, Deputy Commissioner Mike Sullivan, Colonel Worley, Lieutenant Colonel Jack Herzog, Lieutenant Colonel Jones, my community outreach and new communications director Lindsey Eldridge, and Drew Vaught who takes care of all of our data analysts, and my deputy chief of staff, Andy Sullivan is here, and our representative from our mayor's office of criminal, deputy chief of staff of public safety, I'm sorry, is here also. My deputy commissioner of administration Jim Gillis is here, and my chief technology officer, Woody Davis is here, and my government affairs director, Michelle Werzberger, is also joining us. So, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. You've all have the slide deck that shows you the end of the year crime totals, year-over-year comparisons, and other information that the council has requested. My team and I are prepared to answer any questions you may have about those numbers. Good evening, Mr. Council President, I'm sorry to see. I want to be clear that each of those numbers represent an individual, a family or a community that has been victimized. We take each incident seriously and are committed to holding these perpetrators accountable. Every shooting, every murder, every violent crime that occurs in our city is unacceptable, and the men and women of the Baltimore Police Department are working hard every day to keep our city safe. To that end, I want to talk a bit about some of the targeted and impactful enforcement efforts our officers have completed over the last few months. During the first two weeks of December, the Baltimore Police Warrant Apprehension Task Force coordinated a warrant initiative with our partners from the Baltimore County Police Department, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Baltimore City School Police, Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, US Marshal Services, and the FBI. This six-day initiative focused on individuals who were wanted for committing violent crimes in our city. The initiative resulted in the arrest of 118 people for a variety of crimes, including attempted murder, robbery, domestic violence, handgun violations, parole violations, as well as the seizure of several firearms. As a result of that effort, we had 90 clearances and performed services on a total of 208 warrants. Twelve warrants were for robbery-related charges, three warrants were for shootings, nine warrants were for first-degree assault, seven warrants were for handgun charges, and 10 of the warrants served for at-risk individuals. At the close of 2019, the Warrant Apprehension Task Force recorded 176 arrests of at-risk individuals. Overall, there were 54 murder warrant arrests, 66 shooting warrant arrests, and 340 robbery warrant arrests completed for the year. In total, that unit was able to complete service on a total of over 3,700 warrants in 2019. Earlier this week, we announced that BPD made dozen arrests for homicide cases this year with the clearance rate of 52 percent. That case closures include incidents that took place in the 3,200 block of Bel Air Road, the 1,800 block of Harlan Avenue, the 1,900 block of McHenry Street, 100 block of North Kenwood Avenue, the 2,400 block of Louise Avenue, the 1,800 block of West Pratt Street, and the 1,400 block of Groin Highway. Since the beginning of the year, we have taken over 150 illegal guns off the streets of Baltimore and have made more than 80 gun arrests. This year alone, we must continue to build on this momentum and be laser-focused in apprehending and holding repeat violent offenders accountable. I am extremely proud of the work that our detectives and our enforcement units have completed in just a short time. As you may remember, after a two-week-long sting operation that targeted people soliciting prostitutes in several areas of Baltimore City, a total of 19 men with ages ranging from 26 to 78 were arrested between November 4th and November 15th. They've all been charged with solicitation of an undercover officer for the purposes of prostitution. Their pictures, which were displayed during the press conference, were also posted online to the BPD's Facebook page. Now, contrary to what some people may suggest, prostitution is not a victimless crime. It has significant negative impacts on the quality of life in the neighborhoods where it has taken place and can attract other forms of illegal activity, including drug dealing and gun violence. It also often leads to violence against women who are sometimes forced to work as prostitutes. This effort was specifically designed after collecting the input of residents and community members in the southeastern and southern districts who, for far too long, have been plagued by these illegal activities. They worked with us over many months to develop a multi-pronged community policing effort that we are all proud of. In addition to these efforts that have concluded, we are currently engaged in a multi-agency operation called Relentless Pursuit. In this effort, we are working with our federal partners, including ATF, DEA, FBI, and the US Attorney's Office, to apprehend some of the worst offenders in our city. Now, since this is an ongoing effort, I'm not yet at liberty to share some of the specifics about our results. However, we will be releasing more information about this effort in coming weeks. What I can say is that our joint effort has already netted a significant amount of major arrests, and I am grateful for our partners who have dedicated their time and resources to holding offenders accountable and making Baltimore safer. In my crime plan, I specifically call for targeted enforcement that leverages support and buy-in from other agencies because BPD cannot do it alone. The framework of those relationships existed before I arrived, but we have made them stronger and are better coordinating our efforts. The various federal partner agency heads meet once a month at the BPD and our office to ensure we're working as cohesively and effectively as possible. In addition to these enforcement efforts, we have continued to make adjustments within our department to nurture and promote the best and brightest within the department and adjust staffing levels in key units as often as we can and as necessary. I have worked with the Police Executive Research Forum to provide informative command-level training sessions to command members so that they can have the management skills needed to make sound decisions on deployment efforts, resource allocation, budgeting, and leadership development. Last year, we added 12 detectives and two sergeants to increase the capacity within our homicide section. These detectives are currently receiving on-the-job mentorship training from other seasoned homicide detectives and are scheduled to receive additional formal skills training to ensure they are ready for the vital task of fully and independently investigating these heinous crimes. Our patrol officers are conducting more foot patrols, business checks, while also identifying and targeting criminal organizations whose actions are fueling the majority of our violence, including robberies, carjackings, and drug trafficking. In line with our comprehensive crime reduction plan, we are continuing to develop our capacity to engage in data-driven and technologically innovative ways to prevent, deter, and displace crime, as well as identify and apprehend those who committed. One of the efforts we are expanding on is a CIGIC program. The new research component approved by the Board of Estimates yesterday will start a review of the NIBIN data in the Eastern Police District and then expand in scope to the entire city by the end of 2020. This program represents another important tool to assist us and assist our detectives in investigating and closing cases, including homicides and shootings. Now, we have also recently added seven more detectives to the Public Integrity Bureau so that we can better manage our caseload and reduce the amount of time it takes to complete and close cases. We have been working to expedite resolution in minor policy violations, such as failure to appear in court, loss or damage of equipment, or failure to attend a medical appointment. These cases, which should only take a short time to resolve, used to take months to close because they were not a priority. Now, they are only taking about 20 days to complete and close. So, by resolving these minor cases quickly, our investigators can spend more time on properly investigating more serious allegations of misconduct. Finally, we are working hard to increase and improve our communication with the men and women of our department, as well as all of our stakeholders, especially the community we serve. Over the last couple of months, I've been personally visiting our officers at road calls and throughout the district so that I can directly hear their concerns and their needs, and so that I can thank them in person for their continued service. My goal is to ensure that we strengthen relationships that exist, build new relationships where there were none, and fix relationships that were broken in the past. Additionally, I have personally met with community leaders throughout the city to listen to their concerns, talk to them about our efforts to deter and displace crime, as well as our reform initiatives. I've also participated in dozens of community walks so that I can see with my own eyes the areas that our residents are concerned about, to talk to them about what they would like to see happen in their neighborhood. Those walks are invaluable because it allows me, my commanders, my members of my executive team, to have one-on-one communication with the very people we're here to protect. It's an important part of creating new relationships and restoring broken relationships with our residents. In addition to that, we are developing protocols to consistently notify the public when we make arrests in violent crimes. It is important that community understand we are working to solve these crimes and provide them with closure once we've identified and arrested the perpetrators. So, in closing, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about our efforts going forward. I'm committed to working with you, with our mayor, with our residents to reduce crime in our city, to implement reforms in our department, and for BPD to win back the trust of the people of Baltimore.
Thank you, Commissioner. And who's going to be presenting the slides for you guys?
I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, actually.
I mean, generally, we go through, we go through all the crime data and then the committee asks questions on that.
Yeah, it's fine. So, I want to start with the end-of-the-year crime comparison between 2018 and 2019. What the slide shows is the overall volume of reported crimes in either year. And those in green, we saw reductions from year over year, and those in red, we saw increases. Of course, the areas of homicides and shootings and aggravated assaults, we all know we saw increases. But it's important to highlight here that when you look at the overall volume of crime, total Part I crimes at the very bottom saw a 6 percent reduction between 2019 and 2018. So, part of what we're trying to make sure of is that we see that the crimes that are impacting folks with things like burglaries, larcenies, and so forth, that's a big effort where we made a lot of progress in 2019. Next slide. This is our homicide and shooting data that we see that comes from the start of our deployment strategy that was renewed in July and toward the end of the year. And so, part of it, again, is tracking the number of homicides and shootings, and so that's the information that's presented here. Next slide. These are the historical slides that we provide to the council at each hearing that provide total summations. So, these are end-of-year totals for homicides breaking down by district. Next slide. Shootings. Next slide. And robberies. And robberies, I believe, also includes carjackings within those totals, yes? Next slide.
One second there.
Oh, yes.
I think the thing to talk about with robberies, this is the fourth year of a decrease in robbery, a fourth consecutive year, a decrease in the total amount of robberies. We haven't had this level of decrease since 2015, and if you look, 2014 was even lower. But for the past three years and including this year, there's been a consistent decrease in this number was actually lower than 16, 17, and 18 for the total amount of robberies in a year.
Okay. So, this slide represents the total number of guns that were turned in or guns that were seized and processed by the crime lab during 2017, 2018, and 2019. Just for reference, 2018 had a very successful gun buyback, so we saw an uptick in the number of guns that were processed by the gun, the gun section of the lab. So, what we're trying to make sure of is making sure that we provide for why that spike existed, so it was a very large number in that year. And then, the total number of gun arrests are also presented in the second half of that slide. And then, the totals for narcotics arrests are, again, split off by the various district and operational units. But again, some context here, these are all arrests for which BPD was the lead in enforcement. There are several instances of federal and partnerships that we have with other jurisdictions for which they record the arrests that are not actually included in these slides, but the overall volume for which BPD was the lead in these cases is presented here. Next slide. Just a little bit with consent decree compliance on an update. The staffing plan, as we've been talking about, has been out now since the middle of December. It's now entering into its second phase of public comment and will be having that comment period through February 21st. The main thrust of that for us is that we do need a significant number of additional officers than we currently have, but again, we're waiting to hear public comment and making sure that we have the comments from, you know, community organizations, from you all as well, before the department makes any final decisions or recommendations based upon the analysis that's provided. Next slide. What's out now is actually a community policing plan. This is a key portion of what's needed for us to be able to go forward. Again, we want to invite everyone who's listening to seek out the community policing plan on our website and can provide comments on how we can improve that plan. This is going to be the core part of our ability to move forward when it comes to training our officers and making them effective community policing engagement agents. Next slide. And then, public integrity. Actually, I'm going to have Deputy Nato come speak to some of the end-of-year figures with public integrity and the overall successes that we've had there.
Good evening. So, the successes we've seen, as the Commissioner mentioned earlier, we added seven new detectives to public integrity to take on the extremely high caseload we have. So, that shows the 23 that are currently assigned, certainly it's not quite at the staffing level what we'd like to have, but certainly it gives us to a process where we can integrate those people in, start the cases moving forward. The average caseload right now is 44 per detective. That's very high. What we hope to do is, over a period of time, is sort of reduce that, and I think later in the slide, this sort of shows the way we're going to do that. Oh, there it is. So, that shows 2019, we had a total of 1,719 complaints in 2019 that we took in. It shows internally, those are policy violations within the department, externally or outside complaints that we receive from the public. The next slide should show a division of the data that we have showing what the complaints were. On the right side, it shows what are CRB eligible cases, which is abusive language, excessive force, false arrest, imprisonment, and harassment. It just shows kind of a division of what types of cases we're seeing. Again, on the left side is the breakup of internal, external. On the right side is CRB eligible cases that we work jointly with CRB. On the next slide, you're going to see the expedited resolution. This has really allowed us to go through a process of finishing some cases expeditiously. What we've done is we've taken fair to appear in court, neglected duty, which is lost property, or fair to attend a medical appointment. We sent those back to the districts to be worked on. What it has done is, an average case for PIB takes 31 and a half hours to do because there's such a numerous amount of people that have to be interviewed. We send them back to the districts, the district commanders, interview the person, find out if they did it. For the most part, people admit that the violation, which these are more easier violations for a commander to look at, they've admitted, they admit to them, they give them a penalty and they send it back to us. We review them. If we concur, we put it in the file. As you can see, we have flagged 150 cases that we have that fall into this process. So far, we've sent out 37 to the districts to be done. We received 37 back. We have some more that have been sent out. And out of that, you can see that we've taken care of 40 cases, three of them that we closed ourselves, and really, it's really saved us a lot of time. Again, out to the districts and back, the consent decree allows us to do that in a 16-day process. Right now, we're pretty much at a 16-to-19-day process, but we spoke to the commanders today. They like the process, and really, it's good for the membership. Things aren't hanging over their head for up to a year. They're getting resolved really quickly, and it's certainly helping them around with the department. On the next one, is not mine, but I will say, we've also added a preliminary disciplinary offer agreement as well, sort of like the expedited resolution, we do it in-house. Cases that come in that are very quick to finish, body-worn camera violation, that's simple, we're allowing our detectives to review it, sit with the officers, offer them a penalty as well, and moving those along. We've identified about 175 cases that fall into that realm. So, currently, we've gone, I believe when I arrived, we have upward of 1,897 cases, and we're now down to under 1,400 cases.
All right, since your appeal, I'll ask you real quick, has any cases expired recently?
So, no cases have expired recently that I'm aware of. Keep in mind that not all cases expire. There's a criminal element to it, excessive force, et cetera, those don't have an expiration. We have some of those that have been past a year due to the investigative process, but no cases that I'm aware of that have fallen into the, that would fall under the LEOBR have expired.
Again, and the second thing was, is a follow-up to something we had discussed a while back, was is there a mechanism that you have found that could be put in place that would enable those who make a complaint to be able to follow up on it? I understand you can't discuss certain disciplinary action that's been taken, but to at least be able to follow up, or can someone contact you guys and find out if the issue has been resolved, if disciplinary action had been taken, and just so that there's some type of closure and that they know that you guys have taken action and it's not just out there lingering?
Yes. So, the process that we put in place is, every complaint that gets filed by the public, whether or not it's in a district, or it's at PIB, it's online, it's with communication, all of those funnel into PIB. Every one of those individuals either get a letter or an email, depending on how they file their complaint, that has an identifying PIB number on it, which identifies to the case which has been opened. They then get a 30-day letter, after, every 30 days, they let them know, you know, that the process is still ongoing, so that they know we haven't forgotten about them. And at the end, they get a closure letter. Now, because of officers' rights, we can't send them the actual discipline, but we do tell them that the complaint has been resolved. If they call, they may get a little bit more information, but of course, we can't give them the actual discipline. But we do do that process throughout so that from beginning till end, they will know that their case has not been lost. And the reason why we use the PIB identified numbers is because that's a way that we can actually go into the system and look to find the information, as opposed to one of our CAD numbers, which is a little more challenging for us. So, we've moved them all to PIB numbers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Rosen Scott.
Thank you, Deputy. You can have a seat. Thank you. Thank you for, Mr. Commissioner, and thank you all for being here. Commissioner, as you said earlier, I think that we all know that last year was a failure and we have to do better. We have, we lost 348 souls, there's 348 families dealing with trauma, communities throughout the city dealing with trauma, not to count all the 771 of dealing from non-fatal shootings. So, and to that end, I would just like to, can we, you spoke about the gun arrests, I wanted to start there. Gun arrests, year-to-date, how many gun arrests have we made this year?
This year, as of a couple of days ago, it was 157. I'm sorry, it was 80 arrests and it was 157 guns seized, and that was as of Monday.
As of Monday, and what's that in comparison to last year? Because just looking at the packet, the ComStat packet that came out last year through Saturday, it was 96 and it said 69, you're saying it says 80 now? Do we know what the comparison is year-to-date from last year?
It is, I think it is slightly down, but I'll let Colonel Worley address it.
Yeah, it's down about 25 percent. It's 106 compared to 2019.
So, it was 106 to 80?
Yes.
106 to 80, thank you. And, Mr. Commissioner, how many guns did you say, total?
At the end of last week, going into this week, it was 157 guns seized and that were taken off the street.
And Colonel, do we know how many, how many guns from last year at this time?
I don't know how many were seized, I just have the arrests.
If we can get that information, it would be critically important. And, Mr. Commissioner, I guess this is a Colonel Herzog question, but have we, how many of these weapons have we traced to their origin, origin so far, of the 157? Now, I'm not thinking that all of them are going to be traced that quickly, but...
Good evening. So, so far, and we have traced a good handful of them, and it kind of is what we've expected. So, one has been from Antirunel County, six from Baltimore County, six from Baltimore City, one from Cecil, one from Howard, three from Prince George's County, and four are still listed as unknown, and that might be an internal database issue where it's not reading the number, but as I said, it's four are unknown.
Any out-of-state trace?
Nothing out-of-state yet.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for that. And Colonel, I guess this is something that I'm not expecting you to have now, but if you could send to the chair and myself and the committee over the next week, the numbers from last year, all the ones we traced and their origin, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir. And is that by county or by zip code? Because I know we had a little discrepancy with that.
By county, by county, and by state if it's out-of-state, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And, Mr. Commissioner, thank you for that, too. And just a follow-up, you and I have been corresponding, in particular about carjackings. Oh, actually, also, if we could go back to the slide, that end-of-year crime comparison. Keep going. Citywide. That one. Is this one slight error? So, we have carjackings in the green, that should be in the red because it's up 20 percent and not down. Yeah, I figured, it's not a big deal. But, just want to talk about that specifically, Mr. Commissioner, because I know you have put in some new things about carjackings, and I want you to go into the details, but can you tell us what you can about what we're going to do differently now to deal with carjackings? Because we know this is a critical issue that's across the city, right? Wherever you go, we're talking, people are being carjacked consistently. We know the changes and how people, their cars are made, and we know what that's doing, but can you talk about what resources we're doing there and explain to myself and my colleagues how we're going to get to tackle this issue? Because even as of this, so far this year, carjackings, while homicides and shootings are down, carjackings remain up even though slightly.
Well, it's about the collaborative effort of all of our investigators, making sure we understand the data, the data analysis of how those patterns are happening and the impact players that are creating those patterns, how we push that information out to detectives, how we push it to patrol, to be on the lookout for those patterns, for those individuals that we know are connected. And so, it's a heavy data analysis, a heavy intelligence gathering, then pushed out to officers daily, pushed out to detectives daily, and then that information from district to district is pushed to a centralized group of individuals who are working those carjacking patterns around the city to connect the dots and the impact players, and then work to build cases. Once we identify who they are, how many cases they've worked, to bring those impact players to justice. Part of the plan going forward is to make sure we have a case review with our state's attorney, with detectives from the robbery unit, district detectives and the citywide robbery unit, to make sure that we are connecting the dots on all of the patterns. But our prosecutors are working the case from the very beginning with us and are helping us build those quality cases. And so, we know the analyst that's been hired is in training going forward this year. That's part of the package, to make sure that we build quality cases and catch more of these individuals so we can prevent more of them.
Thank you for that. And to that end, I want to go back to gun arrests, in one second, too, I forgot to add something. To that end, how many arrests have we made this, so far this year for carjackings? Does anyone know?
I don't have it carved out specifically for carjackings. Actually, excuse me, 12.
12.
I apologize. And that's versus five clearances this time last year.
So, these arrests are clearances, or case clearances?
And I apologize, and so that is for our citywide robbery unit, so that does include a couple of commercials and carjackings as well?
So, these are all robbery arrests, correct?
No, that is for commercial robberies and carjackings, only, not including street robberies.
So, Colonel, so these 12 that are either commercial or carjackings, have any of them been through the system yet, or no? Do you know?
Through the system, as in arrested or in the past?
Arrests and, no, meaning has it went to...
to bring those impact players to justice. Part of the plan going forward is to make sure we have a case review with our state's attorney, with detectives from the robbery unit, district detectives and the citywide robbery unit, to make sure that we are connecting the dots on all of the patterns. But our prosecutors are working the case from the very beginning with us and are helping us build those quality cases. And so we know the analyst has been hired, is in training going forward this year. That's part of the package to make sure that we build quality cases and catch more of these individuals so we can prevent more of them.
Thank you for that. And until that end, I want to go back to gun arrests in one second too, I forgot to add something. To that end, how many arrests have we made this, so far this year for carjackings, does anyone know?
I don't have it carved out specifically for carjackings. Actually, excuse me, twelve.
Twelve.
I apologize. And that's versus five clearances this time last year.
So these arrests or clearances, or case clearances?
And I apologize. And so that is for our citywide robbery unit, so that does include a couple of commercials and carjackings as well?
So these are all robbery arrests, correct?
No, that is for commercial robberies and carjackings only, not including street robberies.
So Colonel, so these twelve that are either commercial or carjackings, have any of them been through the system yet or no, do you know?
Through the system as in arrested or in the past?
No, meaning has it went to, have we started to see the cases move to the state's attorneys or where are they in that process?
Yes, so they are handling the cases, none of them obviously have been adjudicated, but they, you know, they are working directly with the state's attorney's office on those cases.
Thank you, thank you very much. And Mr. Commissioner, to go back to gun arrests before I yield for my colleagues so for a second. Out of the, what's the total number, I'm sorry. Out of the number of gun arrests that we have this year, how many of those individuals, VROs, ARIs?
We can get that to you.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, I will say this, this is something that we talked to your staff about. They know this is a question that I'm going to ask every month. So this is something we should be prepared to answer every month, right? Because we know it's not always about how many, it's about who. And we want to make sure from our side that we, we believe that you guys are targeting the right people, but we want to make sure that those people are represented in the arrests and those are the very people that we're removing from our neighborhoods. So if we could get that as quickly as humanly possible, most likely before the hearing is over. But also, if we can make sure that that's a part of the packet every month. This is something that we're going to talk about every month. Because these are the very people that we know are wreaking havoc in our communities. Mr. Chair, I'm done for now.
Thank you. Commissioner, can you give us an update on the training academy move? And also if you can start with if you will be leaving resources in the current, in the old location and if so, how many?
Thank you. We, a couple of weeks ago, we did a soft launch with the move to the new police academy facility with the newest class to start this year. There's still several classes that are still at the Northern Parkway facility that are thirty-eight week academy classes. But with some, some management practices, some cross-training of instructors, we are able to shave off eight weeks of training without compromising quality. And we started the new class at the new facility. And sometime late March, in April, early April, we think we'll do a full launch with the ribbon cutting and the whole ceremonial ribbon cutting at the academy by moving the entire training there. There's still, for a while, could be a few entities still at the Northern Parkway, but the entire training, police academy, training section and education will move to the new academy sometime in early April.
So there's no current plan to move those other entities out in the end of April as well?
Only, only the education and training is scheduled to move to the new academy.
Gotcha, okay. And then the second thing we're looking for an update on is with the rollout of the new radios?
Basically, what we did is we put a lieutenant in communications. So what they're going to do is they'll gradually roll out the radios. Some, some units have them already, but there's a lieutenant that's there that's his, that's simply his job to basically to catalog them and basically keep track as we give them unit by unit. So it should, as they come in, we're going to get them to catalog, distribute it and out to the officers.
So you don't have all of them in yet?
They are, they are here, we just haven't cataloged everything to get them out to all the officers. Some have them, some don't, but the majority of them do not have them yet.
And when do you anticipate that being done? Because I think the preliminary dates we were given at the last hearing was the end of January, which would be now.
It won't be done, it shouldn't be done by the end of January, but we're along in that process, we just have not completed it yet.
So we're...
Probably by the end of February, we'll have everything out.
Gotcha, thank you. Councilwoman Sinead?
Under the two thousand and nineteen misconduct data, I was wondering if you could break down what harassment means or the different types of harassment? If you can identify them, because it's a pretty big chunk, thirty-two point five percent.
Are you asking about the harassment, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes. So the, the... We get a lot of complaints from the citizens, a lot of it, you know, a lot of those come out to be sustained, some of those are not sustained. The majority of them are the people being stopped for violations that they don't believe is an appropriate violation. They come and file a complaint for harassment. Some are officers that have gone to calls, have left, have come back by again, they think they saw the officer following them. So it is a mixed bag. One of the problems with these five categories is there's a lot of things that if it's from a citizen, we try to follow it into one of those buckets so that C R B also looks at it. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of different types of cases that go into those. So I couldn't give you an exact what they all are because it is sort of broad-based.
Thank you, thank you, that's it for me.
Councilwoman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Council President for his line of questioning related to the, the guns that have been taken off the streets and the gun arrest. Kind of saved me a couple of my questions, but thank, so thank you, sir. But I, I do think it's worth reiterating the fact, and we're only dealing with limited data up in front of us, but it appears to be a direct correlation between the number of guns we take off the street and the number of arrests we make for, make for gun arrests. It looks like it's directly related to the number of homicides and shootings. And just Commissioner, if you can talk, you know, just a second too. And currently, even with the eighty arrests and a hundred and fifty-seven guns that were taken off the street, we're still behind last year's pace for, for both arrests and gun seizures. Can you talk about the efforts to, I guess, boost up that area of our enforcement? Because if we don't, if we don't get ahead of that pace, data says that we're headed towards another violent year.
Good point. And yeah, we, all of us that you see here are constantly working to motivate and inspire officers and educate and train them on how to be proactive. As a matter of fact, we, we understand that there is some confusion from many officers about how do I go out and be very proactive in this, this new environment that we find ourselves in. And so we're about to roll out training to every member of the department on stops, searches and arrests so that we can get from what we think we can't do to teaching what we actually can do. So there's no confusion. We, we work to inspire and motivate them to be proactive every single day. We hold commanders accountable for the proactivity or the lack thereof in ComStat every single Thursday. What we're seeing is that we're moving officers into affected areas. But it's a combination of being proactive and doing the work to stop individuals who we believe are in the process of committing a crime, which is reasonable suspicion. And combining that with community engagement so that it is not all enforcement, it's high levels of community engagement. And so I think without, without the empirical data of exactly why we see a reduction, what we see is an increase in community engagement in foot patrols and officers doing not necessarily less enforcement, but more community engagement, which is, you know, eating up an equal amount of time. And so, but we're encouraging the go-after individuals with guns. We, we understand the correlation of people who are carrying guns. It is the same demographic of people who use them and the people who get shot by them. It's the same eighty percent.
Right.
That get shot by guns and are shooters of guns are the same people who get caught carrying them. So because we understand that correlation, it is our message every day to, to our, to our officers, both overt and covert, to let's, let's constitutionally go find these people who are illegally carrying guns so we can remove them and the guns from the street.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, my, one more question?
Sure.
And maybe this was said before and I just didn't get it. We often, I often hear in our hearings, discussion about the challenges in recruiting, and the national challenges in recruiting officers. What exactly is the national attrition rate? Because I'm just curious, are we consistent with the nation as it relates to officers being separated from the department? Or are we, is our separation rate significantly higher than the national average?
I don't know that we track national averages of attrition because it's, it's different from department to department. I think small-sized departments experience one level, medium-sized departments, and then your large departments, we fall into the category of large departments. It's probably somewhere around the ten percent because we're trying to hire about ten percent a year. And so we're always working to outpace attrition. What we can say, and this is actually for, for the next part, we were going to present on this for the next part, that this was the lowest year in the ten-year period for attrition. We had been averaging a certain number every year for nine years and we saw eighteen to twenty percent drop in attrition this year. So it's the lowest, the lowest rate this year. We, we were averaging before two thousand and nineteen, nineteen departures a month. We averaged sixteen departures a month. That's a twenty percent decrease. And so although people are leaving, they're leaving by and large because of retirements and people who are at their retiring age. And we try to track where, where people leave, at what stages of the career they leave so we can create a robust retention plan to target those individuals to incentivize them to stay longer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's, the stock reality hits us until you really see the numbers. But just even looking at the data that you've presented, and I'm quite sure we've seen this on a number of bases just on the, based upon this, just in the last five years, we're minus four hundred officers just because of that, that attrition that's happened over that period of time. That, it's incredible to see, you know, eighty officers a year, you know, from being, you know, essentially losing from the ranks that we have. And if we don't, we don't fix that gap, you know, you, you will never have the resources that you need in order to make the city, you know, safe.
We are, we are diligently working to, to change the rate of hiring and the rate of attrition by improving all the things that affect morale, that affect performance, to make this a great place to be and to stay, just like we want this to be a great place to come for, for, for new hires. We're competing against not just everybody in the state, but everybody in the country. And we're working to make this a more attractive place for, for individuals to come. People still want to come. The, the marketing camp, the digital marketing campaign is increasing our applications, but we're still finding that it's about a two to three percent pass or fail rate between application and hire. And there are so many things that are disqualifiers in the process. We're working very hard to do better than other cities at making sure we find people who make it through from application to hire and that we can help them overcome whatever obstacles they might face without compromising the quality of the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you. Just one question. I know everyone or most people know that we have consent degree neighborhood liaisons that monitor and work in each district. Are there any programs or introductions where those liaisons meet and talk with officers, even your high-ranking officers? Or do you have any, you know, networking set up where they, you know, know who these people are? It should be some kind of connect there.
We, we do have a way of networking to make sure we are educating the members of our department. We know that that's in need of improvement. That's what we're working on now, a better communication strategy to inform the members of our department of what the consent decree is, why it is and what it, what it gets for us and what it requires us to do. And so that's a communication strategy that we're working to build and perfect right now to roll out in the very near future and to our public. Because there, there are people from the consent decree monitoring team and liaisons that do that for the public. And then we do that periodically for the public to educate them constantly. We have to do an equal, as good a job, if not a better job, educating the members of our department.
I brought that up because I know that there are many liaisons that just still feel a disconnect, you know, and like there should be some, some kind of relationship because we're all working in this together.
We're all working in this together. We were at a public hearing in court just last week talking about the progress that we're making and the road ahead and what needs to be done and the communication strategy, both internally and externally, as you just mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and you and your team for the hard work every day.
Thank you, sir.
I just had a couple questions around, so I'm seeing citywide, but, you know, I've noticed an uptick in Northwest and Southwest districts, increase in commercial robberies and carjackings are still high, we've already covered the carjacking piece. What can be done, especially around this, the, the commercial corridors? We've, you know, the businesses are already strained in the city of Baltimore as it just relates to just the perception of the city, but also the break-ins, you know, do have an impact. Can you speak to the work that's being done to work with business owners to better secure their businesses? I've had at least one incident of someone driving a vehicle through a wall to steal, steal an ATM. I mean, it's, it's a lot and I'm hearing that from, from business owners in my community.
Before Colonel Worley jumps in, that's, that's, that's exactly what the deployment strategy actually does and that's why we're, we're seeing a decrease, although we're still seeing those things happen. We are seeing a decrease, but it is to deter crimes of opportunity, which robbery falls in that category because it deters and displaces it. And we are seeing early signs of that. More and more, we're finding officers are actually in the microzones and in the negatively affected areas and patrols have increased, foot patrols have increased, officers are out of the cars more often doing those business checks. And we're working with businesses to, to harden them, to make sure they have the necessary cameras they have, that they can do what they can do to harden their property and their businesses to, to protect them to the extent they can. And then we're checking on them more frequently. Now, we, we could have more and we, more frequent checks and, but I'll let the Colonel jump in because the deployment strategy is what actually addresses that.
Yeah, and what we've got, to address the last part about the ATMs, that was actually a statewide pattern. They were going all over the state and backing vehicles through the windows and stealing the ATMs. But each district commander goes to their community meetings. They also bring in at the community relation council meeting, they give tips on making the business more, more difficult, like the wind, putting signs in the windows, just moving things around from the counter. They give tips, safety tips all the time. Also, our NCOs and any of our officers can not only just go to a business if they, they request it or if they, even a citizen, if they want to do a safety check at their house, they'll tell them where they're most vulnerable so they're not a victim of a burglary or a robbery. And also, our citywide robbery team goes around, but the deployment strategies, we hit the main corridors. So we know when we, like for certain days when it's rainy and cold, that's when our commercial robberies will pick up. So we'll put something out just to remind the officers, make sure you stay on your main corridors, business checks, business checks, business checks. And probably for, like today, for example, we were in roll call and we were in ComStat and we put three districts up, the eastern, northeast, eastern, southeast and northeast. All three of those districts showed the graph of going the last twenty-eight days, our productivity in the, in the microzones had dramatically increased and the crime had decreased. Prior to that, it was the opposite, it was working its way up. So I think we're starting to really get the buy-in now that the microzones are working and will work if we give them the right amount of dosage that we're supposed to give them.
Yep, and Councilman, so just to kind of, you know, from the CID perspective of some of the things that we're seeing, not just only in the Northwest, but citywide regarding patterns. So some advice, I mean, and there's a lot of, especially in the Southwest, a lot of hack and carjackings where individuals are, you know, illegal taxis and then they're getting carjacked for their vehicle. Also, another pattern that we're seeing an uptick in, which kind of plays into the carjacking, but it counts as a commercial robbery are delivery drivers. They're getting called to vacant addresses or dark areas and then they're getting, getting robbed and their vehicles are getting taken. So even though that is a carjacking, the fact that it is a commercial establishment, it counts as a commercial robbery. So it's all kind of intertwined and it's all in one. So that really kind of is what we're seeing at this, at this current time.
Councilwoman O'Quay?
The second phase of the public commenting period for the draft staffing plan opened today. Can you talk about how many or do you know how many responses were provided, public responses were provided during the first period that it was open?
So it was about sixteen hundred or so comments that we received in the first period. I get the exact number for you, but it was well over sixteen hundred.
Okay, I just, this is, this may be more of a comment. Within that draft staffing plan, I think one thing that I'm paying very close attention to is how the approach is, is saying a workload approach versus a per capita approach. Many of you know that I represent Northeast Baltimore and that police district has most people within the district. And what I want to make sure is that we are not going to be moving forward with a drafting plan prior to the... prior to the police districts being redistricted like we were told they were going to be, excuse me, the law said that they were going to be after the census. Are we going to be moving forward with any type of movement with this drafting plan prior to the census being done and prior to all of that data being placed in?
Good question. The answer, it's a couple of answers. Let me see if I can walk through this. So it is workload-driven, and so for the first time, we've moved away from just taking the number of officers and dividing them equitably or equally across the place regarding disregarding, not necessarily disregarding, but not accounting for where crime is and how much crime is in a particular place. So it's workload-driven, and so it will inform us about recommendations about specialized units and caseload per detective. It will inform us about consolidating or collapsing or increasing the size of either specialized unit. The most important thing in it is the increase in patrol, which we know there's a recommendation about what that should look like, what detective units should look like to make sure we have the appropriate staffing level case per, so we can get the appropriate case per detective. It will give us the total number of the department, total number of sworn members we are supposed to have according to the workload and the volume of work that we're doing based on the goals we set, like response time goals, how much occupied time versus free time we want officers to have so that we can do foot patrols and business checks and the high level of community engagement that we set, those goals we set for ourselves. And based on that, it will, you know, there is technology that can inform us, well, now that we know that, how big should districts be and how many people should be there? Then we have to make the management decision to look at the workload per district, but make sure we don't offset it so much that we then create a manpower shortage or staffing shortage for, and have unintended consequences. So yes, we look at the analysis for workload, and we take into account how many officers we need in the department versus how many we have. Then we look at how many we will need per district versus how many we have. But there are things that we have to account for that the technology cannot, can't, like special events and things that happen in the district that are, you know, impromptu things that happen that we know we have to have people always available to respond 24 hours. And so although there may be recommendations on district sizes, we will make the management decision and make sure we don't move people to the extent that it creates manpower shortages anywhere. And so that, what we do is what's called, we optimize staffing and we equalize workload so that wherever an officer works, anywhere in the city, it should feel the same. No officer should be overworked in one area versus an officer underworked in another area. So we can kind of normalize and equalize the workload. But we're prepared to make, we're prepared to accept or reject recommendations if we think it understaffs a particular district.
And the other thing, Councilmember, would be, there are recommendations in the report that speak to civilianization, and that is something we're absolutely interested in moving on well in advance of the census. These are administrative positions, not necessarily in districts, but in headquarters and otherwise, that if we can redeploy those officers in a more strategic way for, you know, patrol districts or other law enforcement functions that need police, rather than having those folks, you know, perform administrative tasks, that's also part of the staffing plan. So again, what the Commissioner is saying is that there's parts of the plan that we can implement in advance of the census, but we absolutely are committed to, you know, following the law, making sure we do the census, making sure we have the district lines updated to have an equitable, you know, distribution and understanding what that looks like. So part of our strategy is to make sure that as we grow as a department, we continue to focus on increasing the size of patrol across all districts, but to civilianize as many of those functions so we can get as many folks as we can out of those administrative functions and on to law enforcement functions. So there's many parts of this staffing plan, and we plan on moving on many of them if we can optimize our current resources without impacting our patrol districts in a negative way.
And there's a, you know, there's a police science to the workload-driven analysis. Real briefly, I'll give you an example. There is one district that is really negatively affected by violent crime, but gets the least amount of citizens' calls. So by virtue of call data, they should have fewer police officers. But we understand the dynamic and are not going to reduce the staffing because of that. That would be a recommendation that we would go against, for example.
I just want to make sure y'all understand my concern. This is a 137-page plan, so it's a lot more in there than just the approaches that we're taking to this. But the Northeast District is a very large district, and I want to make sure that we have the necessary offices to prevent, combat crime within that particular district. I got just one more question, Chair, and it should be a quick question. I've been pushing this plan very heavily to my constituents to make sure that they are providing feedback, that they're reading as much of this because it is a very detailed plan. It's not like the community police plan, it's about 20 pages. What type of engagement is BPD doing to make sure that people know that this plan is available?
We're messaging it everywhere we go. I've gone to community meetings several nights every week to talk about the staffing plan being out for public comment. We put it on all social media platforms. We've announced it, and, you know, we're talking about it in roll calls, where I go to talk to our own personnel. You know, is there a better way or more efficient way to put it into the hands of more people? We would certainly love to have the feedback that we need so we can be well informed. Any help we can get with that, we'd appreciate.
Council President Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner, just to follow up on the Councilwoman, my Councilwoman's comment, just a reminder to everyone that there are things that the state has said that the Commissioner shall, as in must do, when considering police redistricting, and that includes census population and housing data based on the census, district call volume trends, district response time, and then, Mr. Commissioner, any other information deemed necessary by yourself. But also, I think it's important for the council members to know that this has to be issued within a year following the census and that the plan itself, the redistricting plan, has to be submitted to both the mayor and this body to be approved before it moves forward. So I just want to remind everybody of that to make sure that we don't lose sight of things that we have to consider, which population is one of them. To go back really quickly, Mr. Commissioner, you know, we have this focus on microzones. So I would like to talk about, so far this year, I believe we have 24 homicides, 42 non-fatal shootings, and 63 robberies. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Yes, according to those numbers, yes.
Thank you. Can you guys tell me how many of these homicides occurred in microzones? How many non-fatal shootings occurred in microzones? How many robberies? And then also, how many occurred in the buffer area that you guys have been measuring?
We don't have the buffer area, but...
Currently, I use the mic. It's on TV, you have to use the mic.
We don't, we don't have the buffer area, but I can tell you of the homicides and shootings. Year-to-date, only 27% of them have occurred in the microzones. We started tracking that last year, month by month, and as we ended last year, the number was 35. But so far this month, it's down to 27% have occurred in the microzones.
So most of them have been outside of the microzone.
Yes.
And this is, again, Mr. Commissioner, this is another topic that we talk about every month. This is something that we're going to want to talk about, just like we did the last time you guys were here. When you come, know we're going to look at the homicides because your focus is in the microzones. We want to see where it's happening outside of it, in that buffer area, whatever you guys are measuring. What about the non-fatal shootings, Colonel?
That was non-fatal shootings and homicides.
Together, can, do you have them separate?
We don't, we don't break it down. I can get it in the, in the...
Please get it to us, so that's combined. What about robberies? How many of those?
We don't have the robberies in there.
And we're not tracking robberies to that?
We do, but we don't, I get a report every single day. We all get the report every single day. It has homicides and shootings, and it's updated. But we can add the robberies in there.
Please, add robberies. Yes, sir.
If I could, Mr. Council President, one of the things we did when developing the microzone strategy was to develop the baseline. It's 33% is essentially the baseline that we're trying to compare against. So when we looked at identifying the 5% of geography that contains 33% of all homicides, armed robberies, and shootings, the comparison against 27%, which is what Colonel Worley is describing, represents a downward trend that we're closely monitoring. We feel like, again, we're seeing some measured success because these are areas of historical violence that had for five years seen a third of all violence in the city in only 5% of the geography. So again, I just want to make sure we're thinking about it against that baseline when we're comparing kind of the current volume inside or outside the microzones.
I get that totally, and any neighborhood that sees a reduction is a positive thing for me. But for us, we also have to be able to hold you guys accountable for the entirety, right? So 24 is one down from last year, 25 at this point. And we know last year is the worst year that we've ever seen, right? We are few down on non-fatal shootings, and we think that's great. We also need to be empowered with the information to look at the global level. Well, I agree, any neighborhood that sees a reduction is fine, but we also need to be able to see if we're having significant displacement, which we know you guys are tracking. So if we have that information, it's easier for us to hold you accountable to it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, what, it's two homicides, 12 non-fatal shootings?
Two homicides, thank you, thank you, Colonel.
Colonel, can you go through the clearance rates by category also?
For what time period?
For the year-to-date.
For 2019 or for current year 2020?
Yeah, the comparison.
Okay, so end of year 2019.
End of year.
Yeah, the year-over-year comparison.
For non-fatal shootings, it's 17% is the clearance rate. Aggravated assaults is 32%. And 25% in robberies and 13% in burglaries. Those are the difference, the year-end clearance rates for 2019.
And what was it in 18?
I have to get you to 18. I don't have the comparison between the two.
Okay. Now, how many detectives do you guys currently have citywide?
It's roughly right around, in, you're talking about in, just in the districts?
No, citywide, the citywide units, not the district detective units.
So there, and so, in CID alone, and so we have 68 in homicide total, and we also have 14 in our citywide robbery unit?
How many in, how many in citywide robbery?
14 detectives total.
14. Now, how do you guys break down all these homicides? So of the 68, are you assigning each person a certain amount to take the lead on? Or is it broken down by group?
So the way it works, so not all 68 are handling cases. So of the 68, there's also a portion that's in cold case, that's not picking up the new cases that are coming through the door. There's also a portion that's in our homicide operations function. We also have an administrative component as well. So subtract 12 from that 68, and that's going to be the detectives that we actually have handling the caseload. However, I just want to put into kind of perspective that we onboarded, as the Commissioner said earlier, a total of 14, two sergeants and 12 detectives. None of those detectives are actually handling cases at this point. They are in a training and almost kind of like a field training phase, shadowing senior detectives. So the unit is broken down into two separate platoons and is broken down into three different squads. And so we pick up cases based on a rotation. So as, so it kind of evenly distributes the cases. So in 2019, the average caseload per detective was about 6.6. However, I just want to caution you of that because that only is for homicide cases. So if you take into consideration everything else that they handle, which could be serious shootings that they initially work, and the person ends up living, all of the other death and DOA investigations, and then kidnapping when there's a potential for death. And so that average caseload per detective was in the range of 22.57 cases per detective. So their caseload is extremely, is extremely high, and we're working now, and with that addition of detectives, and when they get onto the floor, that will reduce that caseload.
And how long does it stay with them before it becomes a cold case or before it's removed from their active workload?
So as the, and currently, as the SOP stands today, the case remains with them until they retire or leave the unit. So as long as they are in homicide, that case will remain with them. However, Colonel Briscoe and I are currently under, looking at that SOP to see if we want to change that policy and set a time range onto that before it would go back to cold case. However, there's only three detectives total in our cold case unit right now. So that's something we also have to take into consideration.
So do you guys internally keep track of which detectives are solving the most cases or...
Yes, we do.
Okay, and so the ones who are performing, who are not performing as well as the others, what do you, what do you do with them?
So there are some who are currently under review. They're being counseled, also being shadowed. And really what we did is, so going into this year, when we kind of changed our homicides unit, there's a new commander down there, and there's a lot of things that are in transition. And one of the things that we did is that we redistributed all of the squads. So we wanted to even out the talent load amongst all the squads. So that way, we could pair up some detectives who might not be solving a lot of cases, kind of give them the ability to kind of hone in their skills, working with some of the better detectives. So in short, we evenly distributed the talent amongst the unit. And really, so when it comes to homicide investigations, it's kind of more valuable to look at detectives over a period of time, not really just a year, because a lot of times it does depend on the type of cases that they get. So we tend to look over a three-year average to see what that clearance rate is. However, it is something that we are definitely tracking on a weekly basis and as they're, you know, picking up cases and clearing cases. But we, to kind of speak on what we're doing to improve clearance rates, so we're putting a lot of things in place right now. So A, I already spoke to kind of the new detectives that were in the unit and the on-the-job training that they're getting, but we're working to implement additional training. So we're currently working with the Maryland Police Training Commission right now and our partner agency, Baltimore County, to put together a basic homicide investigator school so that we can give them the newest training and get seasoned trainers into train our detectives. Also, we are working with our PSP partners to send detectives away to advanced homicide training. And then in addition to that, we've kind of built in, even though we're still working with an antiquated case management database with Lotus Notes, we're putting systems of accountability in place within that database. So rather than having paper checklists and case indexes, that was automatically put into Lotus Notes so that we have checklists and supervisory reports so that we can see what investigative steps are being done in a systematic process and making sure that there is the accountability to making sure that there's integrity and thoroughness for every single case that comes through the door and that nothing falls through the cracks.
Right, see, because I'm concerned, I mean, one of the first thing that we spoke about as far as this committee is concerned, we're looking to see cases getting resolved, right? Cases being cleared. We know historically, the clearance rates are way lower than they need to be, than they should be. And the problem is with so many cases not being resolved and not being cleared, you know, we're at a point where with the, as few detectives as we have compared to the amount of crime that we have, you have situations where people and communities are victims of this violent crime, and there's not that sensitivity factor that there's somebody there who's going to be working it every single day until it's resolved. Like, I could tell you every violent incident that took place in my district because I follow all of them. And so I just see that these situations happen, and I'm not a detective, but sometimes you can tell that there's certain things that are related based on who's involved and where, you know, the locations and proximities. But I also feel that more needs to be done to make sure that the communities also understand and that the communities feel that they have that person. And so, you know, if John Doe, who's a detective in homicide, is assigned to, you know, their family member, their community member's homicide, that they have that relationship. And like a good salesperson, they're following up with them on a regular basis, calling the friends, calling the family members on a monthly basis or bi-monthly basis. Hey, you hear anything new, anything else going on? I think that what we'll find is that new information will be brought to the detective, but the detective needs to go to the community to get it. They need to be calling those people. And I know some of the systems we're using are now tied into Salesforce or something like that. And so there's already mechanisms in place where that tracking can happen. But I feel like if it was a little bit more public about how many cases, or maybe even internally in the department, how many cases each person has and what each detective's clearance rate is, there would be that competitive nature internally to make sure that these cases are getting clear. Just like when you walk into the... sure that these cases are getting clear, just like when you walk into the districts, you can see who's gotten what guns off the street. There's, there's charts for that, and there's competition for that, um, but there needs to be that element where, um, each case is important to somebody, and that stays with somebody, um, until it gets resolved, or until they retire, and then that gets passed on to the next person. Um, go ahead.
No, we, we, we agree with you, and those are things we recognize, and that's why when we looked at the staffing there, and we, we, we opened up a competitive process to make sure we were selecting the people who had the best skillset and temperament to be a homicide detector, but then we, we now know that we have to give them formal training, which wasn't, you know, not always available at the moment the person went to the homicide unit, which is what we're doing, sending people wherever in the country to get that, and bringing the best training to Baltimore to train as many people as we can, and as, as the Lieutenant Colonel said, even though we've put fourteen more people there over the last few months, we need to now formally train them in addition to their on-the-job training, 'cause those twelve detectives and two supervisors are not yet catching cases where they're the lead investigator, but there comes a time with the formal training where they will, but, you know, that was always in the plan, and then we have, um, witness advocacy, support service personnel that work in the homicide, that are constantly in contact with the family members, and their, the goal is to make sure that even in the absence of the detective being in contact with the surviving victim's family, this advocacy personnel, the advocacy personnel can be in contact to give them case updates and status updates on, on cases, even when perhaps there's no new evidence or no new information to report.
And on that note, is there any update on, um, the recent armed robbery in a place of worship in my district this past week, 'cause if people don't have the freedom to practice religion, I mean, we, we have nothing, and so, I wanna know what, um, you know, what steps are being taken, I mean, there's, there's a lot of detective work that needs to go into that, and so where are we on that?
Yeah, they're trying to identify our, our suspect, um, they're trying to use the, the cameras, the photos, um, and we'll go to facial recognition if we can to try to identify the suspect, but, um, that's, that's where we are right now.
I gotcha, and so, has footage been pulled from all the locations that, that they were known to have passed by?
Yes.
Including a bank?
Yes.
Okay.
I will make sure that they've got every, we, we do a case review every day, um, on a conference call, and we'll, I'll ask them to, for their follow-up tonight, to be ready to answer that tomorrow, but I know the Northwest is working hard on it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burnett?
We're also using the Jewish liaison to help out with that investigation, in case he decides he wants to come back.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, so one of the other, um, concerns that I, I hear a lot about, um, and I know, obviously, in this larger conversation, there's a, they focus on violent crime reduction, uh, one of the concerns I get regularly are traffic enforcement concerns, people speeding through neighborhoods, vehicles being hit, um, you know, there is often a focus on deaths from violent crime, but we also know that there are a tremendous amount of loss of life from reckless driving, vehicle accidents, that kinda thing. Can you, can you speak to, um, efforts to reduce how people, reduce these sort of incidences, and how people travel through the city, um, a- as it relates to, uh, sorry, I don't think you can hear me, um, just concerned about, you know, speed bumps aren't the answer, the only answer, um, to, to safe driving in the city, and like I said, we, I'm constantly getting calls from people worried about, um, the patterns in which people are driving through the city.
Well, you bring up a very good point, that we, you know, all crime is our focus, there is no one crime that-
Prioritization.
That we are focused on, but, yeah, all crime is our focus, and all crime is our priority, every crime indicator, and the deployment strategy, the crime plan, short-term and long-term, are all designed to address all of it, to include traffic enforcement, and, and I'll let the Colonel kinda jump in, but we, we are working to identify traffic patterns, and traffic enforcement is designed to correct bad driving practices, it's designed to minimize crashes that result in fatalities and injuries, and so, where we can do traffic enforcement, in addition to using the technology that will certainly, uh, do some level of enforcement, the goal with technology and human enforcement is to have fewer crashes that result in, uh, deaths and injury. That's the goal, and that's what we wanna do, and we use data to inform us where those crashes are, just like we do with microzones, so we can deploy officers to those areas to make sure, school zones and other areas like that, to make sure we have the right enforcement at the right time, uh, provided that resources are available, that we can do it.
And, and we move our traffic unit around, and, and believe it or not, we get very few complaints, that's usually some, somewhat how we move our traffic unit, but almost every single district has several officers on each shift, that, that is what they like to do, traffic, plus also, it's the easiest way for us to, to get, build probable cause is a traffic violation. So, the speeding, running a red light, um, failure to obey traffic signals, everything, we use as, as a mechanism to, to stop vehicles that we, that basically, we wanna, um, it's called a pretextual stop.
Sure.
So, we can use that, but we also, in the areas where we have the, the kids that are playing, there's different laws that apply there, around the schools, there's different laws, so the traffic unit can go out, we can send our LPR units out, there's lots of different things, but anytime, specifically, if a, uh, complaint comes in from a citizen, we will deploy either the traffic unit or the district units out there to, um, address the traffic issues. Those are, honestly, those are relatively easy ones for us to fix, and, and the state police, the, they, we just finished with them, they come four days a week, every two weeks. Uh, we just finished up with them in the northeast, and this time that they were here for the four days, they got hit, two handgun violations out of car stops. So, it's, over the last year, those guys have really helped a lot, they've picked up a lot of the, uh, a lot of, uh, enforcement effort, efforts, where in the past, it wasn't quite as good, but now it's really well, working well with them.
It, it's encouraging to hear, I mean, there was a young man that was, um, gravely injured in my district from a hit and run, um, and I think it just also contributes to the feeling that things are out of control in the city, um, I think just sort of generally, when I talk to people in my communities, it, whether it's the speeding, the gun violence, the carjackings, people just feel like things are out of control, and I think that's sort of a low-hanging fruit, um, and to your point, can also lead to more, uh, significant investigations, so it is good to hear that, that partnership with the state police is still underway.
Not just state police, it's, uh, Maryland Transportation Authority Police as well, each, each entity sends us five to seven officers for four days every two weeks.
Okay, and then the last question I had, um, was just sort of general, and, and, and I, I know that this is a part of the community policing plan, but just, you know, lengthy response, but, uh, I was speaking to one of the NCOs in the Southwest earlier today about a series of package thefts, uh, in one of the neighborhoods, and sort of sharing information there, and, uh, he does a great job at getting out, um, Sergeant Anderson, really good job at getting out and, and engaging with communities, but one of the things that he said was, you know, we really need to figure out a way, and this is something that he and I want to work on, and will be working on, a way to really elevate that message around things to look out for, whether it be carjackings, break-ins, those quality-of-life concerns that people have, how do we get that information out to larger groups? Um, I mean, he comes to the CRCs, he comes to community meetings, but as we know, your, your average person that may be working more than one job is unlikely to be able to spend two hours at a community association meeting, um, and so I, you know, I would just encourage, you know, other larger ways to engage the masses, whether that be through television, PSAs, or social media, to educate people on sort of just basic things, the fact that you do crime and safety checks for businesses and for residences, or what to look out for, for, you know, if you're in an area for robberies, or how to report, you know what I mean, just sort of, just that information piece to help people, um, better understanding, and, and really, the conversation came up, because we had a, a, uh, community resident in my district that literally saw package thefts going on, and did not call nine-one-one, um, he took the photos from the Ring Doorbell, and like posted them on Nextdoor, uh, instead of actually reporting the crime while it was there, and we talked him through it, and it was funny, we, he said, you would think that that was something you really wouldn't have to say to somebody, that like, if you see a robbery coming in place, you should probably call, um, but, you know, through that conversation between the sergeant and myself, with this gentleman, like, he got it at that point, like, oh, yeah, you know, that's sort of a reminder that even the smallest things should be reported, um, so that's just more of a statement, um, than a question, but just wanted to throw it out there that I think using a larger platform could be helpful.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, and we have one person signed in to testify, Rico Dan- Dancy?
Good afternoon, Chair, um, the robbery unit, I have a question on a policy eleven oh three. So, um, for your NSA detesters, for who do the investigation, if a person who is deaf and blind, what I fight for for twenty years, who asks for a service, their A.D. Tefus, if they tell them no, what is the recall, and if a supervisor make a big joke, laugh at that person who's deaf, what do we do? Because last year in February, I got gunpoint, gunpoint, somebody robbed me in gunpoint on Fair Out Street, and I asked the, it was one of the Tefus who took the case, him and his, at the city robbery unit, make a big joke, thought that was so funny, okay? Made the police report, I done the recalls, when they went to the location I was at, took me to the district, I asked for a service, what did the Tefus say? No, forced me to relapse, and without my hearing, I hear nothing. So, and the supervisor make a big joke, thought that was so funny, that was the big joke of that whole department, ha-ha, we have a deaf and dumb person in the building, okay? So, we, my question is, 'cause I'm also the president of Black Lives Matter for the Deaf, and another organization I, I represent is the, uh, the National Black Death Advocate. What do I tell my citizens who, who, who I guess were in by the Constitution, like, like y'all guess were in by the Constitution, I'm the national president of Black Lives Matter for the Deaf, what do I tell my citizens, my deaf or hard of hearing or deaf black people, this what, they email me, what do we do? If they don't buy us basic of the ADA guide, what, how can we fix this problem? Because if I understand, God of Death is the only police in the country who have a deaf or hard of hearing unit, I, um, I travel from Baltimore, and I work in DC, and these are the questions, what people from DC asking me, people from South Carolina, look what the case in two thousand forty, South Carolina, the man was deaf, got killed in two seconds because the officer did not know how to communicate with him. I just, I'm just curious, what do I tell my millions of citizens who is deaf? Thank you.
First of all, thank you, and I think he brings up a good point, and I think that speaks to a training issue that we here in Baltimore, and frankly, all police departments and law enforcement agencies should be considering, how do we communicate with, with people who have, you know, that issue, and maybe other issues, and how do we bring about that training to our department, so we can be sensitive? And when those things come to our, when complaints like what he just told us comes to our attention, then we have mechanisms by which we can deal with that, through training and discipline, to make sure we course correct, and people don't have that experience when they call upon police for a service, and either we don't serve them, or make them feel bad because of whatever disability they may have. So, those are things that we, he and I have spoken about, we've exchanged information, we'll be meeting in the near future to talk about that, to figure out how we can make our department a better department to service all people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, did you wanna?
Yes.
Okay, sir, if you can come to the mic and just tell us your name for the record?
My name is Mark Cannon, and, uh, I live in North Baltimore. In, in twenty-fourteen, I, I know Commissioner Harris, um, he's committed, you know, to our officers, um, you know, being out and, and, uh, uh, patrolling, and, you know, checking the businesses, and, and things like that, and, and we know, um, when it's a high visibility of, of police presence, um, that we don't have the lawlessness and the daytime murders and carjackings and all that stuff, we know from twenty-fourteen on down, uh, the murders were going down, you know, then twenty fifteen, we had the Freddie Gray incident, and, and whatever happened, um, uh, we have the lawlessness and stuff now, me and other men are out in the streets, uh, you know, and we, and we changing lives through engaging people, and, and the, the police, we getting a positive response from them, Mr. Pinkett, he's out there with us, um, sometimes, but, um, there isn't a high visibility of police officers out, um, patrolling the areas, you know, patrolling the, the, the streets of Baltimore, you know, checking the businesses, not on a consistent basis. You know, I've always said to women, you know, officers don't have any problem, you know, getting out of their cars and interacting with the community, and, and till we get that back, you know, was a officer, retired officer called and said when he was patrolling the area, it was a mutual respect, we know with the Gun Trace Task Force and everything else, and the Freddie Gray and all that, you know, that was lost, but it's not on the community to restore trust to the police department, it's on the police department to restore trust to us. You know, we have a lawlessness that we've never seen in Baltimore City, you know, and, and community policing, um, you know, it's good to say it, but the police have to be out there, you know, um, engaging with us, you know, and, 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 and then one more thing about the, um, uh, we have the methadone, look what I call, I'm a recovering person, been cleaning so over twenty-nine years, God praying, spiritual footwork, you know, we don't need methadone clinics, you know, so we have the methadone, look, we have the people that's out there, um, and they're feeding a lot of the drug, you know, because ninety-nine percent of them is getting high off of other stuff, you know, and I see three officers standing out there, and then, you know, there was no, you know, no activity at all, so I come out of my recovery meeting, no officers, same activity, you know, sitting on, 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 right there where the, uh, 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 under the sign, no trespass, you know, no trespass, and notice that and the other, my recovery meeting, been in the city building for twenty-nine years now, uh, one, the young lady was sitting out there smoking crack, you know, uh, the same day that it was a shooting up there, so that's all we ask, you know, the men are out here, we changing lives and stuff like that, but we just need our officers, and I know Commissioner Harris, you, 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 um, committed to doing that, but, you know, uh, you know, I've been talking to different officers and people, and, uh, they, they thought it was that you didn't have their back and stuff like that, and using all kind of excuses, but, um, I talked to a, a forty-year veteran, uh, for an hour last week, you know, and, um, you know, he said that a lot of the officers don't, don't trust, you know, what's going on now, but you can't use the dissent decree to not do your job, and you can't use the dissent decree to do nothing, you know, ex-commissioner said that. So, that's all we ask, you know, we ask that the police officers do get out their cars and patrol areas and check the businesses, it's good to say it, but if it was happening, we wouldn't have the lawlessness that we have now in our cities.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so this committee will be in recess, and, um, it'll be resumed by the Budget Committee in five minutes.